Steve Sherlock here for Franklin Matters, Franklin Public Radio. Available anywhere, anytime on the internet in your browser, wfpr.fm, and in the local Franklin Mass FM radio dial 102.9. Yeah, the dial, you know, the thing with the knobs and the push buttons. You can preset to 102.9. That's the number. Here virtually today with another candidate interview for our biennial election coming up November 4, 2025. Bob DeLucco, a candidate for town council and incumbent candidate for town council. Bob, thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Steve. And thank you for all you do too, because I know it's all volunteer. We all know how that works.
Yes, we get the big bucks and even when it's a 20% raise, it's 20% of nothing.
We get a lot of raises.
Indeed, so for those who may not know who Bob DeLucco is, he can give them kind of your brief Franklin story, you know, either your road here. Although I think you've been a lifelong person here and life within Franklin and your involvement in the community here.
Okay. Well, yeah, my, my family moved here in like 1908 from the old country, you know what I mean? So that's when my grandmother and grandfather came over and they had seven kids, seven brothers and sisters. And they all stayed in Franklin except for my father when he married my mother. She had to move to Boston to High Park. So that's where I was. That's where I went to school. That's, that's where I was. But obviously, all my cousins are still here. And I always came to Franklin, you know, my whole life. My father would come here at least once during the weekend, at least once on the weekend. And obviously, in the summer, I spent a lot of time here, you know, hanging, you know, with my cousins. And I got to know people there, you know, so I got to know their friends. You know what I mean? So that was a very important part of my life. And then, you know, I, I, I married my wife, Gigi, 35 years ago. And we started having a family and, and, you know, the school system in Boston isn't the best. It was time to find a place to go. And there really was no other place for me to go except because I'm very social. So I like to walk down the street and see people. So, and my family's here. So we, we, when my, my son was born, that's when we decided to move. I had my oldest daughter was, I think she was two, two and a half. So they're all, they, they have not, they don't, they have no idea what it is outside of Franklin. You know, and, and so it's very important for me to, you know, have conversations with people I know, you know what I mean? So that, that meant a lot to me. So when I, when I came here and built my house, actually on my, my family's land, my aunt, and they have a lot of land and one of the lots opened up. So I was lucky and fortunate to purchase it from them and we built it from there, you know? So as soon as I got out here, I got involved because back in High Park, I was always involved with, you know, coaching and, you know, Mayor Menino and myself. We've been friends for a long time because my mother was friends with his mother and you know how that goes. So, so, but as soon as I, I, as soon as I got here, I, I, I started coaching Little League with my cousin Albie with, with his son. So we, I started coaching Little League and then as my son got older, I, you know, I got involved with, you know, I became vice president of Pop Warner for five years. I ended up coaching baseball out here, CYO basketball, girls' basketball. And I was a four-year coach at Franklin High Football Coach with Coach Sidwell. And then, and then 20 years ago, they got me involved with the recreational committee. So I've been on the recreational committee for like 20, it's like around 20 years. I don't know exactly what it is, but it was before I was on the council. You know, and then we, we did a, you know, we did a lot here. We, you know, also one of the, one of the most, I don't know, the biggest accomplishment, I think, I accomplishment I ever did was being a co-founder of the Safe Coalition. As you, as you know, that was a very, you know, it was a very bad time when we started that. Right. You know, of course, coaching high school, you know, I, I think I lost like four kids in two months.
Ouch.
Yeah, that was, that was a very sad time. So that's, I ended up calling Representative Roy and that's when we had that big.
The big meeting.
That big meeting at the high school. That's when, you know, you know, Jen came along and Jim Derrick.
Jumped up on stage at the end.
Yeah, Jim Derrick, you know, Jeff said, you know, I don't have time to do this and you don't have time to do this. So we gotta try to pick somebody out. And it was like a God sent that Jim had got up and spoke about his thing. Because I looked at Jeff and I said, he's the one. And of course, he's taken it to another level and Jen has too. Jen was already on board, but you know, it was, it was, it was awesome. But, and they do a great job. And I, I, I just left the Board of Directors because like you, Steve, I'm getting to retirement. So trying to slow things down. I mean, I'll always be, they can always call me and I will always do things, but I can't be that involved, you know, you know? You know, if they need me to call the people that I got the fundraiser, absolutely, you know, I mean. And I started joining a lot of societies. I became, I transferred my Knights of Columbus membership from High Park to Franklin. And then I became, you know, I've been the vice president of St. Anthony's Society for, oh Christ, it gotta be 10 years anyway. And that's one of the all, I never knew that it's one of the oldest societies around. It's like 110 years old.
Really?
Yeah, because unfortunately, my grandfather was a secretary and I looked at the book and I would, I saw his name signed, but I can't read nothing else because he wrote everything in Italian and I can't understand it.
Translation opportunity there.
So, but Franklin's been great. I, you know, I obviously love it. It's, it's, it's my town. It's where, you know, it's where I'm gonna, you know, I tease everybody on the council. I said, I bought my next house in Franklin, but it's at St. Mary's Cemetery on Beaver Street. You remember that?
Your final resting place.
My final resting place, you know? And all three, I, you know, I had three children. All went through Franklin Public Schools, got a great education, which is what drove us here in the first place, you know? And actually, two of them are still in town. And my son isn't living in, you know, he's living in Tampa for work, but he, his main house is Franklin. And my, my youngest daughter is getting married in June and she already bought a house on Oak Street. So I don't think they're going anywhere.
Oh, it doesn't sound like it, no, no.
Yeah, so, but, but yeah, that's, that's kind of how it all started, you know? You know, like I said, it was, it was an easy transition for me because I knew all my cousins' friends, you know? I knew, you know, you know, actually Larry Benadeno was the chief at the time. And I saw him and he happened to be really close with my, my cousin Tommy. And he said, listen, there's too many DeLuccos moving back in town. You can't come back, you know?
Stop at the line.
Yeah, yeah, the line's done, he said. But, but outside of that, I mean, it's been a great experience. I was nervous, but you know, it was great, you know? So, and I love this town, you know? Who can't, you know, we do many good things, you know?
Yeah, we've, we've been here 30 years and yeah, I'll be here for a while.
Yeah, you know, you know, I, you know, I work at Massport, obviously. You know, until I retire in the next few months. But, but you know, people that I work with come to Franklin for a sporting event. And like they go to high school and they'll say, they'll come into me and they go, geez, they go, your high school's like a college campus, you know? I mean, so it makes you feel good because we were all involved with that at that time, Steve.
Sure.
You know what I mean? We all, we all worked hard for that and that was a great accomplishment, you know? And, you know, the fields are, you know, unbelievable. Every time somebody comes and they play sports or they, they do something and they, they say, geez, this, this, you know, your fields are unbelievable. It's beautiful, which makes you proud, you know?
Definitely.
You know, so that's my road.
That's your road. And then since you like talking to people and meeting people and discussing, et cetera, civil discourse, as you're aware, certainly a key component of our, our form of government. And unfortunately, the political party divide more on the national level. Unfortunately, it's still creating some of that, some of that divide here amongst us locals. But we're fortunate at least that in this biennial election, it's a local election. There's no party affiliation associated with it. We're all neighbors, party doesn't matter, but we still have to have a civil discourse. So what else would you do or could you do to help bridge that divide?
Well, I know they say it's, the last few elections, I thought, I really did think that it went, it kind of went partisan, like people, people, you know, and it shouldn't because Franklin's Franklin. Franklin, it, it, and like you said, it's, it's all one, you know? I mean, we're all one, you know? From my coaching years, the best team, best team might not have the best players. You know what I mean? But they work good together. I found that on a lot of teams. They could be the most talented team in the world, but they're selfish or whatever. But you get, you get these other teams that work great together. They're unbelievable. They're easy to coach, they're easy, and that's what I think. And, and I do think that transparency has to, has to come, you know? And, and explain things in plain language, easy to understand for everybody. And that, and, and that's, that will open up the doors, I believe, for, for a lot of conversations that will, that can turn really good. And, you know, you gotta reiterate that the town council is not partisan. It isn't a partisan and we're all in it together. I don't care if somebody has a, a good idea that I'm not friends with or I'm not, I don't, I'm not, not that I'm friends with everybody. You, you know me, Steve, I'll talk, you know? So, but if, if there's somebody there that I don't even know, but comes up with a good idea, who cares? It's a good idea. That's all I care, you know?
Right.
And I, I try to say that a lot, you know? And so I just definitely agree that in, in, if you agree to disagree, it, it actually makes it a healthy society. You know what I mean? I don't agree with you, you don't agree with me, but let's sit down and have a cup of coffee, you know what I mean? That type of stuff is what I, what I like, you know? And, and, you know, I, I do believe that, you know, I think the transparency is coming. I think especially between us and the school committee. I think, I think that definitely has to happen to make everything work together. And you know, I think, you know, Chairman Dave Callanan and the rest of them, they're starting every, we're all starting to come on board, you know, to, to work together. And that's, that's a key, that is a total key. And I, I hope that, and it's gonna have to definitely be a key this time because we're going into bad times. So we can't fight, we gotta stay together and work together and get things done for the citizens of Franklin. You know, yeah, I agree, you know, and I know you do too. So, but.
So the, the last of the three questions that everybody gets gives you a chance to tell what experience or background will help you serve in this particular role? Or what do you bring to the table that helps set you apart from the others that are competing for this role? Or another variation on that is how would it help you actually coordinate and collaborate with those who end up on the role?
Sure, that's a great question. I think my, my greatest experiences, if you remember, Stephen, you will remember, you know, when we first got on, how the police department and the, and the fire department unions were, were horrible. They just weren't working together.
Right.
And, you know, Representative Jones, Cardrest, Councilor Bizani, and Tommy, we were up at that firehouse all the time trying to negotiate things, you know, you know what I mean? So my union experience, I think, helped bring the DBW, the police, fire. Unfortunately, I, you know, I'm, I'm not involved with the teachers' union at all. I think my experience there, bringing them in, bringing them together between management and, and the union. We don't get any phone calls anymore about that at all. They, they, they seem to negotiate and, you know, I think hiring, hiring the, you know, TJ and Jim were the best hires. And they, and they, because they can work with people. Again, they can work with these people and there's, there's not a fight going on. My negotiations, they come up and they, you know? Yeah, I can, I can work both sides and I think that's one of my biggest attributes, if you want to say it. I think I can work both sides and help get everything going through. And working with Brutus of the DPW, he calls me an awful lot because, you know, of my Massport experience with the vehicles and stuff.
Some of the equipment stuff.
Yeah, all, all the heavy equipment stuff. And, and, and Jim with the fire department. I said, Jim, whatever you do, don't, don't buy a Rosenbauer, please, just don't. I'm having so much trouble with them, please, just don't do it, you know? And he agreed, you know? So I think that helps. And, you know, being friends with Mayor Menino, he always, he always told me this when I was, you know, saying, oh, someday I might, might sit in your seat, you know? And he always said, listen, if you're sitting in this seat, people are gonna come to you all the time. They're gonna ask you to, they're gonna ask you to do things. Some things you can do, some things you can't do. But one thing you do is always make sure you call them back and tell them the reason why you can't do it or the reason why you can't. He goes, that's the best politician you can ever have. And I, I, I think I pretty much, you know, I pretty much do that, you know? I, I, you know, I'm not a, you know, because I'm working so much and, and I think when I retire, I'll be a much better councilman, to be honest with you.
You'll have more time.
Yeah, I'll have more time to do things. But one of the ladies down the senior center, she said to me, she said, I sent you a message on Facebook. I said, gee, I said, I'm sorry, Laurie. And I said, I'm sorry. And I said, she goes, well, why didn't you answer me? I said, because I didn't see it. And she said, I said, Laurie, why do I put my cell phone on the website? You've known me for 20 years. I said, call me, will you please call me? If I don't answer, leave a message, I'll get that, you know? So she said, you know, you're right. You know, and it was something stupid, you know? But, you know, and I, I think my relationship with, you know, Representative Roy, the congressman, and, and, you know, even the state senators, that helps us because we're gonna need them to try to get us as much money as we possibly can. And I know it's gonna be hard for them too, but if they're in our corner, you know, I'll feel a little bit better, you know?
Better in our corner than not.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't know what the future brings. I really don't and I'm gonna be honest with you. Who knows, you know? But, you know, and of course, being a council for 14 years, if, if I didn't learn anything, Steve, I shouldn't be on the council, you know what I mean? I said, it's just, you know, it's hard when you first get on because you're learning. You really are, you know? And, you know, I gotta thank, I really have to thank Jeff Nutting for, for, you know, he did bring me along a long way. You know, if I had any questions, he brought me down. He did teach me a lot, so I'm always thankful for that, you know? So, you know, so that's, that's my experience, you know? I'm ready to go and just, you know, just, just call me, you know?
Sure, sounds good. So the next set of questions is certainly council specific. And as you're well aware, one of the key responsibilities of the council is to hire and provide oversight for the town administrator and his or her team. I think you've already alluded to some of that anyway. But while you can serve as an escalation point for the town folk, that does not include micromanaging a particular department or operation. Do you agree or disagree?
No, I agree. Micromanagement, for somebody that, who was micromanaging? Who, who, you know, as, as a supervisor, I was micromanaged by the higher ups. And it is, it is the worst environment ever to micromanage. You know what I mean? It's because you can't, you can't do your job, you can't help people, you can't do, do anything. If, if something is wrong and we find out that it's wrong, then okay, then we can work with that. But to micromanage, we hired these people, we hired the town administrator, the DPW that you, if you don't trust them, then why did you hire them? Right? I mean, you know, why did you hire them? So let them do their job. I'm, I'm, I'm big on letting them do their job and, and helping them in any way I can to make everything smooth. A smooth rotation on any, on, on anything. But micromanaging is, is for somebody that has been micromanaged, it's really not a healthy environment at all. I was never so happy to not, not do that anymore, not get involved with that anymore. I see it where I am now. My boss does not micromanage. He's like, you guys handle that. You got a problem, come on out, come on over here, my superintendent, you know, he'll say, come over here. If you have a problem, then okay. And we, you know, we've had a couple of problems, but he handled it the right way. When we, when he needed him to come in, he came in and he did it. That's all I can, that's all I can ask for.
Right.
What I mean, and that's what we have to do with all our guys, with all our, you know, department heads and everything like that. So. So that's, that's what I am. And the transparency between the TA and, and, and the chief and the both chiefs. And Chuck, and Chuck is gonna be a great chief. He's, you know, Jim's leaving and Chuck will, he brought Chuck right along. And it, going back to the union days, Chuck was a union guy, not involved, you know? And, and so I think he's gonna be a great, I mean, Jim is a great chief. He'll be a great chief because he's, he came up to the ranks and he saw both ways. He knows how to handle both ways. And he knows, you know, that we, we can be in his, you know, corner. If there's transparency, he'll have it, you know? And TJ is the same way. TJ, you, you can call TJ and ask him the stupidest question and he'll give you an answer. But, you know, so, but outside of that, that's what I think of micromanaging, if you get my drift.
I think I do, yes. So one of your key responsibilities certainly is approving the annual budget, which sets the priorities for how the town of Franklin operates. And as we talked a little bit before, we're faced with fiscal challenges for the next several years, at least based on the forecasts. And I don't see any magic happening, unfortunately. So what do you think are the financial priorities that we need to address? And then there's two kind of additional pieces. And if you need a reminder as we go through that, we can certainly do that. But once you determine what the priorities are, we determine, me, we meaning the town, council, et cetera. How do you explain what needs to be done to the voters and residents? That's part one. And then I think you addressed kind of the relationship with the school committee. And how would you help this community understand the separation of the roles between the council and the school committee? So three, three aspects there.
Yeah, so we got three aspects there. So we're gonna go with what, the financial one first?
Financial one first, yeah.
So with, with times that are tough, and I've said this obviously in the last 14 years a lot, but you know, police, fire, DBW roads and schools have to be our top, you know, have to be our priority. But everything's our priority. I mean, everything runs into everything. So you, you, long-term financial stability, responsibility, use of stability funds, playing for multiple years, we have to anticipate cost increase. And I hate to say, but you know, sometimes now we're gonna have to live between our means. I hate to say, but we, you know, we, we have to, you know, I mean, we just got $276,000 in, in state fund that got cut. So we, we have to come up with some way to figure that out, you know what I mean?
Right.
So how do we, I mean, you know, through economic development, but you know, obviously you know how I feel about, you know, the apartment complexes and obviously you know how I feel about that because I don't know against it. I do believe that economic development is good, like, I mean, the houses that are gonna get built for people to live in. I'm off, Washington Street is right in my backyard. So it's not that I care that it's in my backyard, it's just a good development, you know what I mean? So, you know, smart growth is the, is the way to go. And, you know, obviously, I don't think that the apartment complexes are good. And, you know, I've been very vocal about that. But I would like to, if we, if we could get some more commercial growth, Steve, and even if, if we have to even give them a little bit of a tax break to come in, you know? I, we have done that in the past.
Sure, yeah, it's been at least three or four in my term, most of which coincides with yours, where that TIF tax increment financing.
Yeah.
Works.
It definitely works. I mean, if we have to tweak it a little bit, I think that's what we should do because that's huge for us to get in, you know? So I don't know, I, yeah, that's, that's about it for me. I mean, I, I don't think that we can, I think we have to have smart commercial growth and smart revenue growth. Hopefully, you know, there are, I don't know how much land is left in front, to be, to build. I really don't, I, there really isn't that much left.
Certainly not any big lots for development size, no.
Yeah, we got one, you know, behind us here that will be going up. But, so, but, you know, and, you know, my, my, as you know, and I've, you've been in the room when I said it many a times about, you know, affordable housing, you know? I mean, we, you know, we, I know we agree on some of that. I mean, you know, $2,400 a month for a one-bedroom is just not affordable for any young kid to be paid. And it's kind of lousy and it is what it is. But I mean, my oldest daughter's back home with, with, with her boyfriend to, just to save money to try to buy a house.
Sure.
If they can, you know? And I would, you know, I understand that. But I wish in the long run, we could have more, the, the houses that we, that we could sell through the town. And then, you know, they can, we sell it for whatever it is. And then, you know, if they move out in five years, they can only make 10% profit and stuff like that, just to get, because the city, the city, I had four of my friends do that in the city and that's how they got their start.
Sure.
You know what I mean? It's just so expensive for these young kids and I, and I just don't know how to do that. I don't, I don't figure that out. But, you know, so that's, that's it.
Yeah.
I don't know what else you want to say.
No, that's, yeah, financial priorities are what they are. Then once you determine, explaining to the voters and residents.
You know, it's gotta be in, you know, plain communication, you know, and, and easy, easy talking, you know what I mean? And, and again, it goes back to what we were talking about before is that a lot of the citizens just have to get more involved, just to know the whole, just to know the whole game. How many people, you know, I've been on the council 14 years. I mean, I can walk down BJ's and somebody will come up to me and say, are you still on the council? And, and you know what I mean? So, and I say, yeah, you know, I said, haven't you seen any of the meetings? I, I haven't watched any of them, you know, you know what I mean?
Right.
I definitely think, and I talked to Ted about this a couple of times. We, I'm just trying to figure out a way we can get the town people more involved. Because there's somebody out there with a good idea for something. I don't know what it is, but it's, it's gonna be a good idea, you know what I mean? And, you know, you can't just rely on the, you know, the nine of us to, to, you know, to call us and say, oh, we got this idea, we got. Call us and say, oh, we got this idea, we got that idea, come to some of the meetings, come into the, you know, the the budget subcommittees and 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 voice your opinion. We 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 walk away with something like that, you know what I mean, because. You know, like you say, we're only volunteers, Stephen, you know, sometimes, you know, when you're working, like you, like you said, when you're working, sometimes it's hard to. Catch up with everything, you know, you're up at twelve, one o'clock, looking at the computer, see what the agenda is, you get, you know, and then you're up at, you know, how many times did I say, I mean. Midnight, midnight, one o'clock at at the town council meeting and I gotta be up at four, you know, so I get three hours sleep and go to work, you know? So, all right, that's coming to an end though, but.
Yes.
So but. And then uh.
The last piece was on the separation of roles between council and school committee.
Well. Obviously, um. The school committee, we. You know, we give them their their budget, whatever it is, you know, that's their money. They they do what they have to do with their their money, we do the municipal side, we do, you know, and uh. But lately, I think the last couple of years, the last couple of terms, it's been, I mean, before that, Steve, as you as you well know, um. We didn't know what, where the money went. Were they buying extra pencils, were they buying, you know, I, we didn't know that, but now uh between Lucas and and. And Jamie and the those guys, it's there's more transparency, we see what's going on, the school committee gets more involved with us, we get more involved with them, which is, which is um. Which which needed to be done, I think it needed to be done, you know, because if we get a question. About schools, we can't answer it. And that, and the people don't trust us anymore and they get a, and the school committee gets a question about why can't we give them more money, they can't answer that either, so. Yeah, you know, it 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 makes us not look good, I I think, so now the more the transparency that we have between both of us. I think uh, you know, I I think uh helps a lot, you know, you know what I mean? So that has to go forward because there are more people that. You know, people getting involved, they want to know where the money goes because if services get cut. You know, we're the first ones to get called and the school committee gets called, obviously, you know, we get, we get, you know, we get. And we don't want to cut services, I mean, this is, the the services we have in town are great, you know, uh. I mean, you know, the the public library is awesome, you know. You know, it's sad to see that the first public lending library, I I learned that, it's a lending. You know, they to get to cut that is, I mean, that's awful, you know? And.
It's one of our firsts.
Yeah, and in the senior center. I mean, the the work that they do down there is just, it's it's just unbelievable, you know what I mean? I mean, people come from other towns to come to our seniors. I mean, just to figure that out, I, you know, you know what I mean? You don't have to figure that out too far, I mean, they do, you know, both places do a great job, you know? And for the most part, we all do a great job, you know, they they're all committed to to the town to do what they what they have to do, you know? So it's our job to try to get them. A balanced budget, basically, is what we gotta try to do in the best way we can, and if we have to cut something, then we have to. Have a workshop and understand what it is and get and get more people, like I said earlier in the interview. You know, um, you know, on those subcommittee me uh meetings, I was. Glad to sit in the audience because I kept to look around and say, gee, you know, it's just. It's the same people showing up, the same people, and we did it in different areas of town. So we, I thought it would be different, but it wasn't, so. That's gonna be one of my goals next, uh in in if I get elected again in November, it's gonna be one of my goals to. Get to the community and get them out and get them more involved, because I think that is gonna be a real important role. The next, during the next two years. I I do, you know?
Sure.
I don't know how I'm gonna do that yet, but I'm gonna try to figure it out, Steve.
Yeah.
You know, and you know, there's gonna be new people on on the council and hopefully they get great ideas, you know, if I get elected, you know, there'll be new people on there. Yeah, council that maybe they come up with a great idea, maybe they'll come up with an idea and I go, oh, that's great, let's do that, you know, you know what I mean? So, you know, so that that's uh. That's my goal next, you know, along with the other stuff is uh, you know. Definitely one of my goals to get more people involved. I had ideas, I just gotta, you know, I just gotta put them together.
Right, yeah, and you'll have some time, hopefully, relatively soon to do that, so, yeah. The last of the three questions is, do you support the goals and recommendations of the master plan? And if so, what do you, would you do as a council to help implement them, or if not, why not?
Well. I mean, there's a lot there.
There is.
There there's a lot there, do do we? Do we think we can get all that done? I don't know, that's gonna be a tough call.
Well, it's a ten-year plan anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, still, it's a lot there in in the way the money's going, who knows, right? So we don't know, I mean, God, I'm hopefully something turns around and we can do all, you know, we can do all of it, you know, they worked really hard on that. Um I think smart growth is um very, is is is. One of the most, you know, important part of the master plan, affordable housing. Obviously is, but. As I, you know, I I like, you know, like representative, they have to change the way affordable housing is. I'm, you know, just to help these kids, you know, and I I, you know, I I talk to people. Me and my, I remember when me and my uh my wife and I got married, we were, we probably made six hundred a week. We paid two fifty a month for an apartment, right? You know, uh I I mean, we could save money and and could build a house, you know, I had more money then than I get now, yeah, you know, making. Three, I took home three hundred a week, she took home three hundred a week, I mean, that, you know, that was it, but. Again, the and and I talked this about union, uh and I know I'm going off track a little bit here, but you know. You got your health insurance paid for, you got dental paid for free, you got eyeglasses paid for free. So when. You don't get that anymore, you know, so you know, you gotta pay for that, you know, so that that's that's uh, that, you know, that's. When I, I'm a little off track on that one, but I wanted to mention that, you know what I mean, before, but you can figure that out. And uh. You gotta focus on the community, which I think is, and and zoning updates to to make the town look good is is absolutely important. Uh and again, and I'll say it again, because this is one of my goals. Is ongoing public input and accountability is 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 very, is very uh. Is very important, sustainable growth. That preserves natural open open space, I love open space, but I don't know how much more we're gonna, I I don't know how much more we can do, I mean, you know, we we did do good with the uh. Schmidt Farm and the property down on Maple Street, that's and it's beautiful, I was up at Smith's Farm uh, to be honest with you uh. Like last week on Sunset and uh I was talking to John Smith. But I was where the, where the um barn was.
Oh, right.
What a, what a beautiful setting it is up there, I mean, it's it's beautiful up there, you know, so that was, that that's, that's, I'm I'm very. Happy that we got that done, that was, that was awesome. We worked a little bit on that, but we got that, you know?
All in good time.
All in good time, but.
So we've covered the questions, is there another topic that you, we haven't talked about that you want to raise or just? You know, kind of give, since we've got the opportunity with the voters and residents listening, uh just make your closing statement.
Well. You know, uh being fourteen years on the council, most people know who I am, what I stand for. And. You know, just, just. What I'm trying to say is if I have, if I'm fortunate enough to get reelected. You know, and if if you're one of the new people in town, one of the old people in town, whatever you are, just. My cell phone's on the on the website. Please just call me and and I'll have coffee with you, I I might be your favorite house guest too, I don't, you know, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't care, I'll come to your house, but and and uh I think. That's what we're gonna work on in the next time, so we can, we can, we can get more people involved, which I think we need to. I'm looking forward to retirement because I know um, I don't think I was a bad counselor by any means, I thought I did, I thought I did a good job being retired, but I. I know I can be a better retire uh council being retired because I'll be around more, I'll be at the senior center almost every day, I'll be, I'll be around to talk to people. Um I'm I I'm actually looking forward to that, to be honest with you, Steve, you know, sometimes you you miss things because you're working and you you have to make a living, you know, you know what I mean? So, you know, so I'm kind of looking forward to that, um. And I'll probably still work delivering oil to every resident in Franklin that George has, but. So but uh outside of that, yeah, you have any questions, please just give me a call. We're around all the time, just call me, I'll do what I can for you, if I can't do it, I'll let you, I'll tell you I can't, but I'll try my best. That. I can assure you that, so hopefully you'll vote for me on November fourth and. We'll be uh seeing a lot of Steve again and we'll work together to get more people together, Steve, that's all we're gonna, I told you, that's my goal this year.
Definitely.
Oh.
Yeah, well, the uh part of the video will have a slide that'll include your contact info, your phone, email.
Yeah.
Phone priority, we'll put that in big bowl.
Yes, thank you. So.
Good, well, thank you for taking time to share your insights and your stories so that the residents and voters of Franklin can cast that informed vote. On or before November fourth. And to the residents and listeners, thank you for doing so, and a quick reminder, we do this because Franklin matters.